One by one, in categories, starting with the concerns expressed by the school committee chair. At the Board of Selectmen meeting on August 31st, 2020, the chairmanship of the school committee brought some concerns to the attention of the town relative to the circumstances of damage to a Nashbead Middle High School field. The chair expressed what he described as his displeasure and said, "I don't know what went wrong, but I don't expect it to happen again." He further said, "If this was any other year, we could have had students on that field." He also said, "There were no barriers set up." The chair further said, "For an event to happen and to wait 24 hours before contacting the superintendent is unacceptable." So, in response, I'm going to start with the respondents. I will attempt to put this into a clear perspective for you, but shall not compromise an ongoing investigation that may lead to criminal charges. On Friday, August 28th, 2020, the Nashbead Police Department and the Nashbead Fire Department responded to a Nashbead residence regarding a person with facial burns. Materials were discovered that led to investigators from the state fire marshal's office being contacted. Members of the Explosive Ordinance Division, or EOD, also responded. Items that are allegedly considered improvised explosive devices, or IED, were seized, stabilized, and secured. I give full credit to these true professionals who walk into the face of potential danger and take their responsibility seriously and then make decisions and take actions to ensure public safety is preserved. They evacuated the immediate area of the residence in question. This was an orderly process. The homemade fireworks, or explosive devices referred to as IEDs, required safe and strategic removal, security, and detonation. Had this not occurred swiftly, the consequences at the residence were dangerous and potentially devastating. The location. The initial plan called for detonating the devices at Southgate Beach. However, after careful consideration and thorough deliberation between the Nashbead Fire Chief, the Nashbead Deputy Fire Chief, investigators from the state fire marshal's office, and the supervisor of the Massachusetts State Police Bond Squad, the selected location for detonation was a practice field at the Nashbead Middle High School. I would emphasize, as you all know, that this site is the exact same location from which fireworks are discharged for the annual community picnic. The detonation was scheduled for Saturday, August 29th, but due to the weather forecast including winds and rain, the technical experts had to wait for acceptable conditions. On Sunday, August 30th, it was decided that conditions were acceptable. And the seized items were to be detonated at the described location at approximately 10:30 a.m. The decision-making. The decision on the site of this detonation involved experienced professionals in EOD. The on-scene supervisor stated, "Considering the options," that this quote, "was not only the best site, but it was the only site," close quote, "given contributing factors to determining pros and cons." Other locations, such as Southgate Beach, were ruled out because the detonation was going to take place during daylight hours. And there was concern about attracting bystanders as well as disrupting piping poles. The use of joint-based tape guard would have likely resulted in unreasonable delays because of controlled access. Based upon distances required and other relevant factors, the site chosen was the logical one. Perimeter control. In direct response to the concern, "If this had been another year, we could have had students on that field." The assertion that these prepared and trained individuals would not have known or adapted to such conditions is insulting to their level of expertise, and I don't mean any insult to you, George. In direct response to the concern that there were no barriers, that is simply factually inaccurate. Multiple officers of the Nashbead Police Department established an outer perimeter, which was identified by yellow taping closely monitored from above by observers in a Massachusetts State Police helicopter. Any persons that could be potentially impacted by noise were evacuated, including some casual tennis players. An ambulance, a brush truck, an EOD truck, a hazmat team, and multiple members of the Massachusetts State Police, the state fire marshal's office, and the Nashbead Fire Department and the Nashbead Police Department had the scene completely and unequivocally under control. Notifications and communications. I was contacted Friday night by a command officer on scene from the Nashbead Police Department and the Nashbead Fire Department. I was briefed on the findings at a Nashbead residence. I was updated as plans changed. You are probably wondering why multiple people were not immediately contacted. Question. In the execution of this plan of this nature, the plan of this nature, safety is obviously the number one priority. In this age of social media, spreading information faster than the press, and I should add often inaccurately, it was critical to carry out this detonation without so-called onlookers seeking thrills or videos and putting themselves in harm's way while possibly delaying the detonation. I was told what I already knew, which was that limited people should be informed about this for security reasons. Approximately 90 minutes prior to detonation, I did notify the Board of Selectmen of imminent action. I did this out of concern that they may receive a call about an explosion or loud noise. Additionally, I discussed with the fire chief a reverse 911 call to residence in the immediate vicinity just prior to detonation. Given that it was Sunday morning and school was not in session and the location of the detonation was an urgent public safety matter, no other notifications were made. The integrity of the operation was maintained to the extent that the state police expressed appreciation that the detonation was height lived. As a result, security of the area was made easier. These operations are not conducted to keep people in the dark, but rather to ensure that safety is not compromised. First thing Monday morning, the fire chief spoke with the supervisor of DPW in order to provide remediation and repairs at the detonation site. This included, but was not limited to, bill of craters caused by the detonation and cleanup of scattered debris. Shortly thereafter, the fire chief spoke with the high school principal and informed him about the action date. I'm going to go off script just for a second and say, in retrospect, knowing what I know now, I should have notified the superintendent. I didn't realize that this was going to result in craters. I did not realize that this was going to result in the scattered debris that it did. That's on me. It's not on these folks. I have the utmost respect for your superintendent, and as a professional courtesy, I should have called. Commitment. The town stands committed to restoring the practice field to its previous condition, which quite frankly was not of quality grade to begin with. And I say that lightly. The preparation for execution of this plan even included identifying sprinklers. Statements prior to fact finding. And no, George, I'm not pick-marking. I believe it is incumbent upon any committee, commission, or board to request their administrative point person to gather facts based upon legitimate concerns. And I understand you had them, and I don't blame you for asking. It may be necessary to assemble what happened, why did it happen, where did it happen, who was involved, how did it happen, and if necessary, can it be prevented from happening again? Fair enough. Fair enough. Operationally, I believe that this could have been processed swiftly and effectively between my office and that of the superintendent. I don't understand how one can assert public criticism of what occurred at the same time it is said that one doesn't know what occurred. The two statements uttered at the same time do not reconcile. The public comments relative to the incident in question give rise to the unnecessary public alarm. I believe the public lies on us, its leaders, with professional voice and steady guidance in challenging times or adverse conditions. I am fully confident that I would have solved this with the superintendent. Summary and conclusion. I envisioned what I have experienced on many occasions, fireworks or some form of IED being detonated in a safe and prudent manner. I presumed the fireworks would be discharged from a place where fireworks are typically discharged from. The perimeter would be secured and notifications would be made to the residence within the immediate vicinity. I thought a random call expressing alarm over a noise could be dispelled by the police department and fire department. The actions of these professionals, the chairs, comments notwithstanding, were necessary, appropriate, reasonable, and based upon a level of specialized and advanced training. These actions were not reckless, but rather taken in good faith to protect the public's interests. Given the totality of the circumstances and the public safety threat in these situations, I cannot pledge before you that this site will never be used again for the detonation of an IED. But again, I'm going to go off script. What I can tell you is that there will be effective, timely communication, and the superintendent will be involved, at least for the purposes of knowing what's happening, and I will fill him in on what I can without compromising any investigation. With that, I turn to the committee to answer any questions to the best of my knowledge. I also have the individuals with me who were responsible for commanding the officials in the field during the incident and the aftermath.
Thank you very much, Roddy, for coming here and making that presentation. I will only clarify one thing, and I will believe what you said, but I said what I meant was a student might be arriving that Monday morning without the school district being known. I did not imply exactly what I said, but I'll be, we have researched that. I think the main object of the school committee here is to make sure that the superintendent is involved at all times when any department has any interaction that involves the schools. And since we have your word on that, I am fine with that solution. Questions? Kathy?
If I could, I just want to say, if it's a public safety imminent threat, and I wish I could give you a scenario and examples, but I can't. There could be a unique set of circumstances where these public safety officials have to take swift and immediate action. What I'm assuring you of is, as soon as I can pick up the phone and call up the superintendent, and that's me, I will, and I should. If it's a situation in progress, it could be countless things, and I don't want to get into the what-ifs. But I think, and I could be wrong, I think the concern of the committee was, if you're on a field that is attached to the school, at some point, let us know instead of finding out hours later. And that I understand. But what I don't want to do is say, if they're conducting an investigation, it could be a drug deal, it could be who knows what. The notification could come after the fact rather than before the incident, depending upon what the incident is. Understood and accepted.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I think we all understand, I think for most of us, we understand that, you know, those situations come up. We have, I think, paid and, you know, our fire police department for doing what they knew they had to do. I think it was like George said, it was just the communication of it, and, you know, obviously, as you said, there may be times you might not be able to tell people after the fact. I think it's just making sure that we're kept in the loop on it because, as George pointed out, there could be kids showing up for practice the next morning and found those craters, the debris, or... And then we're looking at a bigger issue of potential injuries and think, you know, like if they're silly enough to keep playing or attempting to play on it. I guess that was my concern, was who's using the field and when, and is it going to be cleaned up at that point? And, you know, those are my questions. It never once was, and I do want that known, I was never questioning, you know, the competency of our safety officials because I know situations happen that they have to handle. But it was the breakdown of communication, I think, that for me was the big point, but thank you for looking at that.
They did, in my opinion, a superb job under some very dangerous conditions. And as bad as your crater is, I don't want to think about what would have happened at the residence, which had multiple blowings, had something wrong gone there. John?
So, I appreciate you filling us in on this. One question that I do have, and I'll answer. So, the disposal was on Sunday morning, Monday morning, DPW had a fire principal. When did the superintendent notify?
I did not notify the superintendent. What I'm saying is, on Monday morning, the fire chief notified the DPW grounds supervisor, and then shortly thereafter, notified the principal. I don't, I think it was around 8:00 or 8:30.
About 9:15, 9:30.
9:15.
It was an email, but I was included on it.
Okay, so it was an email. So, wasn't it a call to inform that this had taken place for an person, but it was an email that was sent. I don't dispute any of the actions. I do question, I don't have the knowledge or access to the base and all of that because, Roger, anyone else would have thought that would have been very well tried to be said on too. What concerns me, I guess, most is the issue regarding the communication here is the trust between town manager and the superintendent. That, you know, it appears to me that is lacking to be able to trust that what you say in confidence to the superintendent will stay with the superintendent. This is, in my observation, at least the second time that I'm aware of that this has come up.
And I can tell you, you're flat out wrong.
You said it was trust. You did not trust, you didn't trust to tell anyone else.
What I have said is that there was a security concern relative to the word leaking out. Given the totality of the circumstances, it's Sunday morning. It is not only Sunday morning, but the school is closed. Is there any kind of a difference in making notification on Sunday morning versus Monday morning? And quite frankly, with all due respect, I didn't think it was that big of a deal. I didn't realize that those craters were going to be caused, and I didn't realize that there was a little bit more than what I initially understood. The point being, if it's a place where we discharge community fireworks on an annual basis, doing this on a Sunday, what is the worst-case scenario? Somebody hears a boom and calls, and when they call and they get the answer from the PD that this is okay, that's it.
No, no, I'm just curious. I guess it's a little, did you always assume they were fireworks, or did you know at some point it was more than that? Whoever...
I don't think we can comment on that because it's still under investigation.
So I guess my question would be, as the person you report to, would you want to disclose so that the town manager can assume it was like fireworks from the 4th of July? That's, I think there's a miscommunication.
I'm not suggesting that it was just fireworks from the 4th of July. I think I've made it crystal clear that it was fireworks-making material that were explosive devices. My point being, I knew that they had to be detonated. They went to a location that was determined after a lot of consultation, consultation by professionals, professionals in the field. And those are the individuals who determined, as I said in my quote, this was not only the best location, this was the only location. So, you know, we can go back and forth there, but the reality of it is, communication was not made. The call wasn't made.
And I guess I just want to make sure that I believe your word that you will do this going forward.
Without compromising any investigation.
Right, right, obviously. Because I would have thought the same communication that went out to the Board of Selectmen would have been appropriate communication to go to the superintendent of the school. Let her know, hey, this is going on, yeah, this is what I can tell you, that's it. Otherwise, I don't think we'd be having this conversation.
And what I'm saying is, I think it could have been resolved at an operational level, which I've attempted to do, not in this administration, but in prior administrations when there wasn't appropriate communication. Yeah?
So I'm not going to repeat yourself right now. I appreciate you coming and giving us a lowdown, because I know you don't have to. And I'm also not interested in second-guessing any professionals behind you. I have 100% certainty that decisions were made at the moment and what the information was available at the time. I appreciate the introspection that you provided and going off script and, you know, a little bit of hindsight on your quarterback and seeing about the way it could have gone. If you did it again, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's well said, Jeff. You answered the questions I had, which was just, how was the site chosen, you know, why wasn't Patty notified? And I would clarify, I'm not trying to put your under the bus. We did not have deliberation and power, George, to go to the Board of Selectmen meeting on behalf of the school committee to deliver those remarks. The ones that you shared just now was the only time I made aware that you did that. So, sorry, I didn't watch the Board of Selectmen meeting on that day. So, I just want you to know that I too would have preferred that this was handled between you and Patty. I feel like you guys have a pretty close working relationship, which is why it came as kind of a surprise that we weren't notified. So, I fully appreciate your desire to keep that relationship strong and taking responsibility for the lack of communication there, so thank you.
And I just want to add, you know, these contacts, these notifications, it's a, sometimes it's a judgment call. You know, sometimes you have a policy or you have a protocol, and you look at the protocol and you say, yep, I'm supposed to notify so-and-so when this occurs. But then sometimes there's a little gray here. And you try to make a judgment call, and I can't tell you how many times in my old capacity and in my current capacity. I've said to staff, you know, you didn't need to call me, but I appreciate it anyway, or you should have called me and you didn't. I mean, it happens. That's just the way it is. It's a judgment call. What I'm telling you, and if you don't believe me, put me on a polygraph, because I'll take one. I wasn't trying to be dismissive to the superintendent. What I was thinking is, do I want to bother her on a Sunday morning? I don't know if she's in church. I don't know what's going on. It's whatever time it was, and it's going to be a couple bangs, and that's it. Is it necessary to call? It was a judgment call. I said no. And I take exception to anybody insinuating that it was an intentional dismissal of the superintendent, which it was not.
Yeah, I'm certainly not insinuating that, and I thought you guys talked daily anyways, so...
Well, we try to talk on Thursdays, and sometimes I'm late.
We could do that.
Yeah. No, I mean, as I understand you guys talk a lot, I will, I wanted to point out one thing in your incident report there that, while you may regard those fields as practice fields, we don't. Several of our teams, those are their actual field. They may not be the football field, but our other teams use those fields for their in-season games.
Fair enough.
And so, the superintendent would have told you that those weren't practice fields, and maybe, maybe, no?
And Nicole, that is something that, you know, obviously is relevant to here, so that's why the call should be made.
Yeah. So, thank you very much for coming in, and to everybody, thank you.
I just have one question about the status of, has it been repaired?
I'm going to be checking into that person in the morning.
Because I will say, I was up there today and it smoothed out, but there needs to be some metal detaching, there were cranking nails and glass still in place. So, I think whatever tool, flex metal thing, needs to be rough across the field.
I think we have a lot of available resources from the agencies that were involved, and we will make sure that the debris that was in the field is removed and the so-called crater will be...
I didn't really see the craters, basically. I feel like somebody did something.
I did not see it, but I've seen it.
Craters.
They filled it with three of them.
They filled it in the craters, so it's just there is still nails. Yes.
Let's see the house.
No, sir?
Yes, thank you very much, once again, and I didn't, if I even inferred that, I did not need to question the integrity of the judgment of any of your staff as far as the fire department, this department, et cetera, have their thought across the seats and doing this. I was mainly concerned about the communication aspect of it, so understood. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, I do kind of live this job 20%, so you are always welcome to call me.
Trust me, you can always call me.
And I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Appreciate it. Next, sorry, any classes?
So, I want to ask a question. Is this a matter of process?
Oh, me?
Yeah, so, did you, should I go back to walk over to take this? You asked to be part of the agenda.
I called, ah, sorry. I called the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. and just expressed my displeasure, et cetera, with everything that happened in the past communications. He reached me probably, he said he'd bring it up. I thought that really wasn't on him, that it shouldn't be me who takes that comment. So I meant, I did not realize that me, on the agenda, they let me in the building. They let me in and I made the statement there.
So you were only two or was it a couple of comments?
I did it on a couple of comments, sorry. It was a couple of comments.
Yeah, but if you were speaking on behalf of the committee, which that's what Rodney is going to sound like, I feel like that was kind of not cool. I mean, and I was upset, I was upset as a super, but I just thought, as far as I knew, you communicated with Matt Cotton. That was all, that was the last I heard, so. I guess I should start where, like, you were selecting meetings in case something you got to show up and probably.
I'm going to read every one of them.
All right. Any else said on that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next is. Thank you, Matt Taverri.
I'm late.
I know, I wonder if you have any thoughts.
Thank you for having me. I mean, four around, I'm just waiting.
Let me know.
Like, like, everything I understand, just dodging, being a move.
Absolutely.
I appreciate having you here. I know that we're going to talk a little bit about athletics. Superintendent the board started on, the superintendent's not a league event. Our athletic director's been in the meeting since spring, knowing the changes we're going to have to make coming into fall. We have Prince Law athletic director meeting next week to finalize some things. And the superintendent's met because of all of the other issues that are around athletics that kind of comes with the building, transportation, all the other logistics, so I think she's going to start off.
So the South Shore League and.
Before you go into this key on page one, can you tell us, for everyone who might be watching, for some of the people, the, how many teams play in the South Shore League and which ones are on the Cape, you know?
Sure. The planning on planning on sports, there's 10 teams in the league. We have 10 soccer teams on the on the boys' side, we have nine on the girls' side. We probably have six to play field hockey. We need to play volleyball in the fall. We have seven or eight right now moving cross-country. We have eight, probably with golf. So football will not be played this spring, practice only. So that didn't cheer to me, practice only as well.
You mean this fall?
In the fall, definitely. The competition moves to the fall two season, which starts February 22nd and goes into April.
That's interesting. Every time you say fall two, I get confused.
A lot of change to it.
So it's 10 teams, soccer, eight volleyball, seven cross-country, eight golf. Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you. Can I explain something about field hockey?
Field hockey, yeah, you six for field hockey.
So the superintendent's in the South Shore League, we've now met on two separate occasions to talk about the fall schedule. We are sort of, nothing is final, and that's why whatever A.G. Taverre talks about tonight and puts forth to the committee, it's not, it's most likely where we're going to land. And only if we were totally remote would you have to vote on anything related to the fall sports. So that was directed from that. And so do you want me to go over sort of the key points and then you talk about? So, and the athletic directors do know about this. So the the five points that we've landed on and informally agreed to. The first day of fall athletics, that includes practices and tryouts, will be Friday, the 25th of September. The fall sports will be varsity golf, cross-country, soccer, and field hockey. And those will all be played following the guidelines that have been issued, and so it's a little bit of a different game. And then it's a district decision to field JV teams in each of those sports and that competitions within the league will be based on if their school also went to JV program. I know Coach Taverre is going to talk about the local playing outside of the league. Football and cheering will be strength and conditioning only for the fall. Volleyball, we all recommend to push to the fall two session, which means it starts in March slash, or it's played in March and April. And then that remote learners may participate in sports if they have fully participated in all of their classes that day. And so we're really emphasizing with some of the meetings we've had with middle high school students is attendance is a little different this year because you could be typically sitting in your class or you could be at home remote learning. And so it has to do with your visually being present at online meetings, including the class activities that are assigned for that period. So throughout your day, you have to be connected and be attending to all your classrooms and then you're able to be participating in the sports. And then I think A.G. Taverre will talk about sort of what are the vision for practicing and anything related to fall.
And I think you saw on the point about travel. That is something to take into consideration at the sub-RC level. So for JV and potentially at middle school, we're not looking to go very far in the 80s of the league. We're together on sub-RC schedule. So we wouldn't be traveling the whole on the bus for now in 30 minutes or the avenue for now in 15 minutes. We're going to try to keep things closer. Now, we live in Middlebrook Harbor, which is 35, 45 minutes out. And then we would also look to the Cape, some of the Cape schools for sub-RC games just to alleviate that bus trip and alleviate a lot of travel concerns, I think, that the parents have. And I think we'd make it easier on our student athletes as well in terms of they'll be home a little bit earlier. That gives them a little more flexibility in their schedule as well. So I think the travel concerns that we're certainly addressed in our building meetings leading up to this point.
Maybe do I stay sort of how you're thinking of practicing with time?
Sure. One of the, just to kind of overview of what we've looked at, there's a lot of things a year. And so the practice piece, I think, for us is going to be an issue with the remote, with the remote weeks for kids. So the the vision that we have is, as you get to the younger kids, JV and middle school, we're looking at having later practices. That allows, you know, when you have parents working, if you're single parent or you have four parents working, it's going to be very difficult for them to get their kids there for three o'clock practice right after school. That's how we normally like to do it, especially younger kids, because they get served first and on the buses around an hour and a half. It would be more like a travel team or a local team and local soccer team. We have that five o'clock to five thirty practice. So that way we can kind of guarantee those kids can get there. And it gives them a little more flexibility within their household to have their parents come home, have them, you know, give them a car, go back for practice and make sure that we can get all of our kids to attend. I think we look to that also at the bar system, we may possibly be doing one practice a week during the evening. Obviously, we're constricted with daylight saving practice, we're constricted here. We have the one stadium field with lights. We talked about using that stadium field as much as we can during the week. So we can get those later practices there that guarantees that all of our kids are able to arrive. Kids are already in order, kids that don't drive and transportation too. We'd much rather have their their parents or someone related in them taking them than say a friend that's not in their cohort or something of that nature. So we need to think about that piece as well, the crossover piece. So those are all things we, you know, we certainly are looking at. We're going to meet with the coaches next week and try to figure out, obviously, their schedules too, but and go over what works best for their kids. They know their kids best. What works best for their kid in terms of practice. That's that's kind of what we're, we're also looking at a lot of things transportation-wise. Fortunately, we have the larger buses that holds up to 24. So most of we had single bar C games, that should be an issue, 23 plus a coach. There's going to be issues where parents are going to want to drive their kids, which which we're obviously okay with. I think the big issues become when, you know, they want to drive friends or they want to drive a teammate. Those are things that we're going to discuss with Principal Law's strategy. And we used to do that. That in this environment, that may be much more difficult now and when it's not at the direct level. So those are all things that are on the table, of course, the PPE piece. We don't have a trainer yet. We're hoping to have that person next week. Our trainer has stepped away. Maybe get someone they knew. We did talk about Principal Law's strategy and potential candidates about what that would look like. It's it's going to be a lot. It's going to be very different for our kids coming to practice. Water bottles, you know, water bottle will go to supply water if they don't have it. But kids can't be trading water bottles. We can't have jug or the press on the thing. The distancing by the trainer's office, distancing within the hallway, the potential use of locker rooms. We've already talked and then came up with it, if you're on remote, you're not going to get those locker rooms because of the amount of kids that, you can only have a few kids changing there. So and then supervision piece, where the kids are in and out. We're really trying to adhere to every single guideline rule that the EEA, DESI, and MIA have laid out. It's going to be, it's going to be a change for kids, but I think kids are adaptable. There's great kids in the south. I think I think we'll be able to do it and we'll be able to pull it off. But it is certainly going to be a change.
Can you tell me, with the 5:30 practice time, what would that normally be over?
Depends upon the team. So the the RC teams have to go an hour and a half to two hours. With the middle school kids, we really push for a shorter practice for like an hour and 15 to an hour and a half practice. So I think it really depends upon the level. The older kids have the longer practices. The younger kids, we try to keep that practice a little bit shorter for them, for a number of reasons from a development standpoint, academic to people.
So it's reasonable to assume that they would be hitting down, taking chairs, et cetera, by eight o'clock?
If it was older kid and we started at 5:30, I'd say because we got eight, they got to the stadium field. Younger kids, we start them around 4:45, five o'clock. You would get them over, right as it gets dark. Then there's the other issue with, as dust comes out, we're going to have. We just got done ordering a large amount of spray because of triple D concerns for working its way down the years. There's many concerns on many levels.
Would we, would we ever look into, I know like the fire department has the large hole lights, the generators that they use for different events, something like that would be potentially for the fall sports to allow for those different practices?
There's a little bit of light that we could generate from the lights in in the area that goes around the tennis courts. So there is some area that could be lit right around the doc school if it keeps it light enough to practice in and to on that edge of that field that's on the edge of tennis courts. We could certainly look at that. I know those, that's getting a little bit expensive. They come on the expensive side. It's running over pop corners and people rent those and they don't have lights. I've been told it's a couple thousand dollars. That's a pretty good amount of money. I think we can stagger it, right? I think we'll be okay. It just becomes an issue of making sure that we can get kids to practice. I think we have it on fields. There's going to be some questions about the playability of some of those fields at this point. Hopefully, the extra week gives us more time to have our fields grow in. But there's certainly some concern about the playability of field hockey, especially if it wants to stand up for me. Those fields have to be at a certain, a certain level to be able to play on game wise. You know, right now, we're not.
Sorry, just going back to previous conversation for a second. So the, so the practices start on the 25th. When are we having like real games?
So the original play date would be the 2nd of October, so it flips over a week after, so we're going to round that to 7th of October, 7th of October. There's, there's also some questions about it and talking about it first, that there's also some ideas of they have virtual meetings as those early practice dates per se. We're going to, our coaches have a lot of things to go over with our kids. And I would much rather have them do it soon, maybe before we go in person. So we talked about actually having meetings with our kids about the, all the protocols they're going to have to follow when they come into the building, the protocols when they're on their off weeks. And then the new sport changes, regulations, they're all going to have to follow. So all the things we looked at in terms of bringing your own bags to practice when you have that off week, making sure you have ample water, get your own water bottle, not sharing. Distancing at six feet with masks, you can only take the mask up to 10 feet when you're outside. All these things, kids, some kids know right now, others don't. We just want to, before we actually have them come on the field and try to practice, I think it would be a great service to us and our kids that we have those meetings before. We kind of lay everything out through two early meetings before we actually take the practice field. So that's, that's something we're probably going to do, just to make sure they're they're on board. We're going to send a lot of literature home to to the parents. We're going to have it on our website and through our social media. Because there there's definitely some changes and we just want to make sure it's ready to be developed and be ready to go to page one when they step on the playing fields.
My other comment, I guess, was about, we talked about the lights and how they can be expensive. You know, at this point, we're still, we have, getting a lot of relief from CARES Act funding. So don't assume that something like that would come out of the school budget. Do you think it would support fall athletics? We saw, I think we have money through the end of the year through the town that has been supplementing some of our COVID-related school expenses, and this would certainly be one of them. So I just wouldn't rule it out if you think it could be helpful.
I appreciate that would be helpful.
And the other, oh, so when will you make the call on this fall two football? Because I know someone's going to ask me.
Yeah, so winter fall, the the EA is going to look at guidelines for every sports season prior, I think it was six weeks prior, because of the beginning of that sports season. And they're going to make recommendations. The reality is, I know people talk about the MIA hamstrings. And trust me, soccer and field hockey look completely different than they ever looked before. But reality is, the EA makes the decision, everybody has to abide by those. But they'll make those decisions six weeks before the start of the season. I gotta be honest, it's a high-risk sport. It's probably not going to be played unless something radically changes and you have zero counts in terms of infection on the cave or wherever it's going to be, or there's a vaccine that is, kind of as you read the regulations, kind of what looks like others, potentially a hockey, the how to know contact rules, similar to what soccer has. How would that have flowed through? But I would think football would, if you were 22, my guess is by the end of middle January, we'll make that call on the sports. I think going to volleyball, it's going to be enough fall two season makes complete sense for us. Our cast being used, our gym being used, cast weights. And that should not have a problem running, but there are concerns about indoor sports. Question we haven't answered, to be honest with you right now, that we're going to look at as administrative spectators, which I think will affect, obviously, which question do you like it? We have not made those decisions yet. The league hasn't made those decisions yet. But the idea of the union with the league is that if you have different places with different guidelines in terms of fans, it makes it difficult if you have parents who really want to drive their kids or gay and they can't get in the stadium. Right now, the guidelines, guidelines are a little different for gatherings, gathering, non-apple gather, 50. It's 50 on a playing surface, a playing field, plus there are some addendums for fans too. So it's more, it's more in that 80 or 90 range for a game, which isn't a lot when you add the players. So you really have to limit spectators, I think, the family, which, you know, we love to do and they got to be masked and everything. They have to follow a protocol as well. But the fan issue is one that we're going to have to really take a look at as a league, as a school, as a district. We're hoping those numbers go up. There's some process that once the week after Labor Day, my understanding is it goes to 100, which would ease these restrictions. Other than you still have to make a decision in the district, maybe more people in there. If that's not the case, we've looked at playing all of our varsity in the stadium. That way we can potentially film those games and then livestream them to parents. If they can't make those games, your family that only comes to this game, they can't get there. So we take a look at at least giving some, giving them something to watch their their family be able to watch.
Yeah, that was going to be my final comment, was that really, because we're not having football, we have the ability to use the stadium, which is our only lit field. I was, I was going to ask, is that how we're having soccer and field hockey is because we plan to use that field for those games?
Absolutely. That's, that's the plan. The plan is to play those games in that stadium. Soccer is a little bit, soccer is a little bit of an issue there because of the width of the field. So the field is normally you have, you can go as pretty much wide as you want. Our coaches would love to have that thing 70 plus feet wide. There you can get up to about 55 feet. So for our boys' coach, he doesn't really love it because there's a lot of throwing to change. So for our boys coach, he doesn't really love it because there's a lot of throwing to change the game a little bit. Uh, we're gonna try and work, see what we can do in terms of expanding that field because you won't have people with different lives on there. We're limited a little bit by the pitters, their jumping pits, so we're limited a little bit. We're gonna try to expand that field as much as we can and that way we can use the lights, we can potentially film, maybe we have wifi hotspots there. Uh, so again, we're gonna try to leave it best for kids so our community can do those games. And we're just saying, as long as the field again, you know, is up to par or even higher.
Yeah, I was just picturing, cause I grew up by one, two months last night, um, and there was a drive in movie. And I was just picturing like people broadcasting their names and they could be, they could be shared on the big screen of the drive in movie place, for example. So many people could go to the drive in to watch our athletes, but I mean, this is the wacky time coming and you can't allow anything, right?
That's on foul play. I'm noticing I got the foul with foul.
That's true. Okay.
Yeah, I got a couple of things real quick. So can you explain to me, cause I don't know, the, what are the requirements, like the P E changes for the soccer and the father playing?
A modification or a extreme. So for soccer, uh, because of the E A guidelines, uh, all slide tackling is taken out of the game. Uh, heading is taken out of the game. Uh, throw-ins will be taken out of the game. Corner kicks are taken out of the game and shoulder to shoulder contact taken out of the game. So remember, you can't ride an opponent trying to bump them on the ball. I was also told you can't box out either, so offensively, your ball, you can't get behind a box out. They're trying to win the contacts as much as possible. Uh, the mask have to stay on. Uh, I, I think it's, it's a little bit insane, but the mask, as soon as it gets wet, uh, you have to immediately change the mask, uh, which is gonna be a problem if you're playing in rain. Uh, so there are, there are a lot, yeah, uh, field hockey, which is eleven on eleven, is now a seven on seven sport. They keep the, the kids from congregating around the ball. Uh, they no longer have corners either, which is a big part of that game as well. So it's, it's, it's a radical change. Uh, I think our, our coaches don't love it, but what our coaches do understand is that, that they're happy to go play. Uh, kids are happy to go play. We did look at the potential. I know some leagues have moved their fall to fall two. Uh, if you have multiple turf fields, that's great. Uh, in our situation, it would be a challenge.
You're almost there.
I know, it's, that, that would have made a decision for us a little different, but, uh, you know, so the first week, like the first week of April, we've only played the pros. We've never played home to pros games before, we have to send them away because the field just runs out. It's just continually cool, dry, uh, cool, wet, and it's just the field's not ready. So I would envision field hockey and soccer having real problems on the football. Trying to calmer their fields and keep those kids healthy. Uh, my guess is probably football's gonna be away quite a bit anyways, game wise. Uh, when we start up the fall two season, we're probably looking at soccer, potentially field hockey, we're the same. So it would be a tough move for us. So our coaches understand that, that, like I say, the rule changes are hard, significant, but they're happy to be able to play.
I don't know if there's Stacy wants to take this review superintendent more, but is this, you know, are we now considering these close contact groups?
Hi, Ken. Hi, guys. Um, good evening. So we will have to track all of that. Um, Matt, obviously I'm listening, so thank you for this. It's really helpful. Um, so we'll need to know who participated, when, um, and the dates. So Matt, I'll just connect with you so we can figure out how to best do that between trainers and Joyce, well, you, you and I will figure it out, but um, that's why I'm listening. So thank you, but I'm glad they get to do something to get moving. So that's good.
And just to let you know, we, we are planning to track the multiple kids in the bus too. So we're gonna have assigned seats for each team on bus. Uh, those seats won't change. It's gonna be a Google sheet. Uh, we work with bus company right now that always gets you in those seats and for tracking purposes, tracing purposes, that's, it's a must.
Just my apologies. So, I mean, they had a pretty stiff definition for what a close, you know, a close contact group was because of school. I was curious if you have a team and a bus for forty-five minutes going into carver? Even though they're masked and six, you know, six foot apart. That, it's gonna be interesting to see how, how that happens. We do have to do quarantine and that, that's the whole team going.
Yeah, I, and that's, that's why we're gonna make sure they're in the same seats and try to, you know, coach, you're gonna make sure that everything's followed and it's, it's gotta be followed. To a T, the one, the one, I, I guess the one thing that it's kind of a, a blessing is that the parents, you know, are gonna pull their kids, who has kids on that bus, they're gonna drive those kids up. That may be effective for us as well.
Um, did you mention basketball? Is that gonna be one of the close contact ones that's gonna be kind of mixed for now?
That's gonna be tough. You know, being a pro basketball coach, I mean, that is the one sport that stands out is the kids are sweating on each other, banging into each other. We, we have, i- if, if this doesn't happen, there's an idea that, you know, we can still do skill work with them and that sort of thing. Uh, it, it's gonna be tough for those high risk sports to go bad wrestling, you know, wrestling.
I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, basketball is very powerful. I mean, things could change. Uh, that's the hope. Uh, which obviously, hopefully vaccine and that's, that's gonna be fun from there, but who takes it knows and all things.
Well, thank you.
Anyhow.
Just one, one last question. And I don't know if we have any, uh, kids that are in that situation or in this situation or not, but, um, you brought your kids that mainly have the, uh, scouted by, you know, colleges. Are we working or are you working with, I believe, working with colleges in regard to how to hold scouting and scholarship process to work, given that normally, you know, that's done in the fall and announcements are done in the spring. Now, you know, particularly related to football. I just wanna know, are you, how, are we actively working with the colleges to try and figure out that so that the kids who may qualify and not be just a wingman?
Yeah, we, so like it's from a football perspective, we have every kid has tape. We, we purchase all of the district. Uh, we kept it on highlight tapes. It takes them about five seconds to send it out to a coach. Takes them about twenty-five, thirty minutes to create a highlight tape. Uh, under contact with coaches all the time, like, uh, tons of stuff. I, I probably spend twenty, thirty hours on this stuff a year. It's, it's a lot. Um, and, and not only just the recruiting piece for scholarships and we look at it more as just being able to open doors and talk to kids all the time. If you're good academically, if you're okay, you just have to be okay athletically or average or above average, if you wanna go play, that door opens where you do well in school. Uh, scholarship kids usually have an idea by their, their junior year. Um, from my end, I know when I've talked to, you know, our soccer coaches have taken, you got girls coaches taking a much more aggressive path to get their kids on that track for college, play college soccer. Uh, we're hoping field hockey coach comes, it's gonna be the same thing. Uh, we really wanna push our, our girls sports in the same direction that, you know, football, basketball, baseball have. We have a lot of kids going to play, not so much scholarship level kid, but, but division three kids. Just for that, you know, that, that, that structure piece. I, I think it's great for all kids. We're, we're pretty heavily involved in that. Um, is the fall season gonna affect that? It may affect it a little bit. Uh, but we have one, we, our kids all come today and we put Google sheets together for them, set it up every local school. They have to figure out what level they wanna play at and start making calls and contacts. Luckily, we have great kids who are good enough athletes to get it working and being a good kid pays off these days. Gets a lot of kids to open the door. So we're, we're actively working for, you know, for all of our kids and we're, we're trying to get smaller sports on board with their video and, and the college piece that they record for every single kid in the sport. If that's the move they wanna make.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, I need, I have one more question.
Well, go ahead, Kipper. I wanted to talk about volleyball.
Okay, um, so speaking of, that, that was a perfect segue to what I wanted to ask. And I don't know the answer, so this isn't like a loaded question. I don't have an opinion, but it seems to me that, um, you might be talking to kids a lot more this fall. Like, I think kids are gonna be disappointed. Um, some kids who are used to being, you know, in, in the gym, working out, doing stuff all the time, are not gonna be able to do those things. And I think that, like, we've all been challenged, you know, out of our routines and sort of our predictable plans for the fall or, you know, um, especially, you know, people who are counting on a good year for those recruitments to get into college and stuff. So have you thought about, and how are you kind of addressing that sort of old student athlete piece in terms of needs that they might have off the field? Um, how are we dealing with that?
Yeah, the, the social emotional part, to be honest, is the toughest part of these kids. Um, I, I didn't realize how bad it was. We had a kid play football for us as a youth sport athlete and very well adjusted and parent, well, we get a little bit of drought in the spring, just, just couldn't take the fact that there wasn't structure, there wasn't a daily presence around friends, around teammates, around teachers. And I'm thinking if this kid's like that, there's a lot of kids like that, you know, and it'd be the last thing I would have thought of. So I think that piece for us is important. The one thing the M I A did do is they have allowed out of season coaching. Now, the principal of the school is one who determines that, Mr. Ball, start trying to bet on that. We're gonna, it's not gonna be a free for all. We're gonna have basketball practices in the middle of the day. Um, it's gonna be more like just talked about. We want our coaches talking with our kids. We want our coaches, you know, emailing our kids, doing Zoom chats, just kind of giving a feel for how they're doing, how they're doing with being home for week. Uh, I'm sure they'll be happy to be in school, but it's gonna be different. It's gonna be different at school at lunch. They're not gonna communicate the same way. Uh, those are the biggest concern that the guy have and their coaches have. Uh, social emotional piece is tough on kids in spring and, um, that sense of normalcy was gone. I think having athletics is gonna help, uh, bring some of that normalcy back. Uh, we try to keep everything that routines as, as, as much as we can, sports like football, but in practice, we're gonna try to do an hour, hour, fifteen minutes, a couple days a week, what we're doing in training and just to be around kids, uh, particularly the kids that we know are academically, socially, emotionally, those are the kids obviously that we're concerned about. But like I say, with the year that an old kid is struggling with it, who's pretty well adjusted, you realize it, it's a large portion of kids.
Thank you. So we, uh, and Coach Tavary can talk about this a little bit more, but we wanted to approach you with you to start thinking about whether you would consider waiving the whole club process that is in place for volleyball sport. So usually you have to go three years before you would be funded for your sport and students involved raise all of the funds. Because of the pandemic, they've had some challenges in that area and Coach Tavary has, um, provided the estimate for a varsity volleyball program. So it includes the coaching salary, transportation and the officials. It's seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars. That would be for this fall two schedule, which is March, April. And then if we also had a JV team, cause what, did we have like thirty-three or thirty? We had a lot of girls last year and great interest. The cost for the same similar cost for the JV program is five thousand four hundred and fifty-one. So for a JV and varsity program, it would be twelve thousand nine ninety-one. And although we're not playing that sport right now, I think they've started to, to give that some thought. I swear that that would be something we would choose to run this year.
Is that something because of what's going on, uh, could be related to COVID?
In, oh, well. The fact that they haven't been able to generate the, um, the funds that they normally would, obviously that that's been a challenge and it probably will continue to be. Um, and I know that in his estimate, it includes uniforms where the kids buy their own. So, uh, that was what they did last year as well. But it was so, um, you know, so, I was gonna say well attended, that's not the word I mean, but the interest was so great. And they had such a positive experience. They actually did pretty well for a brand new infancy team. So I think it's something that we just want you to consider. So we've only done one year so far? We've done one and this would be year two of the club category.
I guess I would ask, um, if I recall, you know, maybe the gate receipts revolving fund, you have quite a bit of money. Would it not be possible for you to expend money from that fund, uh, on this?
I, I gotta be honest, I don't think we even have to use the revolving fund at this point because we're gonna cut down on the number of games we have because of later start. Um, so we would save that money in transportation and save that money in game officials. Uh, so in essence, I, I think you could make a case that those, those funds would be able to fund volleyball in the fall two period, but savings you have in the spring. And potentially some savings for the winter if you don't have a winter that looks the same either. Uh, I, I don't think that would be an issue. I think the other issue with volleyball, with this year, would have been the transportation issue. Normally there's a zero fund transportation for a sport like volleyball, pushing out boys basketball because they use the bands, but the bands obviously COVID are a no-go. Uh, so you gotta put those kids on process. So, uh, that made, would make, that made it difficult as well with the, with the amount of money they have left that they raised, the inability to raise money starting in the spring. But I think that, that, that probably actually would cover that, to be honest with you. And if there's, the law would have no problem covering that.
So it's, it's not a question of money. It's a question of waiving that for your club requirement.
What's that requirement from? I don't remember that in our policies.
I'm not sure what the history of that is. I know it, I know that it comes from sort of someone who has a special interest in sport, putting that forward and then when those kids move on, there's really not an interest in that. I do know the last, I think, club sport that we, was gymnastics, that we went through the process.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea to have that requirement placed. I just don't.
I can look into why.
What are we waiting if we?
Why that is.
We, I mean, we have a policy that's been, we can, we can talk about that and see if we can find where that's at.
I just, I just did a search of the, there's no club sport that shows up in our policies at all. And just the word club only shows up in the student organization, but it's not relative to club sports.
Thank you.
Is that, is that an M I A rule?
No, it, that has been around since we've added sports. That was from another, I would think, maybe a regional school committee decision. Uh, that has been in place since Spike Horn was the athletic director, every new sport just come in, it's had that period. I think what you mentioned was the same thing, but it's not. For instance, Sandwich had gymnastics for three years and when those two or three kids graduated, they had paid for that program and the program was gone. Uh, so I think that was the, the thinking then, uh, and, and it's, it's been in place for quite some time. This is obviously a little bit different. You have thirty plus kids, you know that it's, kids are gonna be there. Most of the kids are returning, so.
Yeah, I got a bad idea. I don't think that's.
But no, it's not.
We're waving, yeah.
It's not in your current policies. And I didn't know, Ashley, if you have any, if there are any things on the finance perspective, rule wise, on that.
It sounds like you have appropriated money in FY twenty-one, which you're capable of spending on just about whatever you want.
And as long, yeah, those lines could go elsewhere, yeah.
Yeah. Stop all these problems.
Lights, we go to COVID economy first. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks. Thank you. We are so grateful. And I know parents, kids, for all, you've been looking at this a long time and it's very nice to see you not in a box.
I appreciate it, especially the financials, what our kids will pay for anything here. It's, it's a plus for us here. Thank you.
So we, we don't have any vote to whether we can buy that.
No.
So I would guess I would suggest that we build it on a legitimate community.
Yeah, okay.
So, just to add my two cents, I, I'm not sure you have to vote when we formed it. And I don't think you voted, I remember sitting here saying, presenting about volleyball in the end, saying it didn't need to be something that voted on for that club piece. And then also if the funding is there from an operational standpoint and where, like you just said, we can make that decision.
I think it was brought to us only because we had some point where we would have to ensure it was in the budget to pay for it after the, the three year program.
Well, and I would want you to know that that was.
Yeah.
Right, but I, I thought what you were asking was for us to consider waiving the previous part, you would refer to the sport.
Well, I think it definitely was the conversation that I think we need to have, but I am remembering when we brought volleyball forward. Well, I think it definitely was the conversation that I think we need to have, but I am remembering when we brought volleyball forward. In the end, that meeting was decided you didn't need to vote. And it was never initially a vote to go with the club. And we just discovered there is no three-year thing to wait.
No, no, I mean, there, there's apparently an informal practice or protocol that the school committee has been following.
But there's, but informally, you could gym not it.
Right, but, yeah.
The only thing, what we, what we voting for.
Yeah, what we formally have to vote to establish that as a sport?
No, there's nothing in your policy related to that. Well.
So any sport could be created?
Well, hold on. Let's just slow down for a second. I think what we said was there's a policy committee meeting that's happening soon. Let's, let, let's do our due diligence. I realize you just did a search on our policy, but I, I don't know if I, I'm not questioning you.
No, you can question all you want. I'm just trying to, I guess, not have the committee kind of get mired down.
I'm just wondering, we already have a meeting scheduled.
Yeah. But maybe we don't need to put it on the agenda until we.
Sorry, guys.
We'll, we'll do, we'll do, have a few asks you guys about what we thought.
All set, Tom? Way to go. Uh, next, I should have, I was originally intending to put Massachusetts, Andy Grayson's resolution under a consent motion also to just move back to a policy committee to study, but I forgot to do that. So we have a consent motion and then also the two to minutes, which is basically the same thing. So I will ask for consent motion to approve the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty.
I have a question regarding the minutes.
Okay.
When I look at the, um, page, the page two, the consent motion at the bottom. It appears me with this, uh, this, I'll record it. It tells, and then it syndicates that there's approval. And then there was other actions that took place. I believe there were other actions took place and then that would have been furthered. But for example, I had questioned the order to, um, the warrant signing.
Yes.
That was pulled out of the consent motion.
That's correct.
I believe that should be listed first. And then the last thing under there should be the motion to approve. But I may be wrong. These minutes were going through that because you told us something.
I pulled out the agenda. Because Jeff gave you a clean way to do that. And then at discussion, we pulled out the, uh, warrant signings. Uh, at your, at least with your suggestion, that you wanted that pulled out. So we only really have one consent motion left at that point, which is to approve the minutes. So.
I'm just saying, it's a question. I thought that had to be.
See, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Tom.
I thought it was a question. The two of the minutes happened after we pulled the other act out. Of consent.
I see what you're saying.
I heard you wrong. That was my reference.
So what are you suggesting? Move that to the bottom at the warrant sign?
Yes. I found the one that I'm using. To put, it's not sequential.
Not sequential. I understand what you're saying. Okay. Any other comments?
I believe the, the approved minutes with, uh,
move to consent with the change as indicated twenty-eight minutes after warrant signing in the actual minutes.
That's good.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Okay. Wait a second, Tom. And, um, if you have any questions? Say anyone else? Here we go. Not a call for the coach. Kathy?
Yeah.
Don?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
I'm staying.
Uh, Nicole?
Yes.
And your guess? Four yes, uh, one extension. The minutes have been approved and the consent motion next is reported, this is my attendant.
Hey, real quick, Mr. Chair. So I, I'm still confused what the purpose of the consent motion is and how it's saving time on the agenda. I believe there's that for maybe discussion of consent motion, that's the whole purpose of it.
Okay.
Yeah, it didn't work very long.
I'm just curious. I'm not, I'm not trying to be.
I'm just saying what you're saying. In reality, if I should have pulled that because I did not add the other thing that I wanted to add in there. So there's no sense having a consent motion, which is approved right away to be approved over the minutes.
But the purpose of the consent motion, it explained to me honestly, is that we need to have items in there that are so superfluous that it's basically roll call vote. I mean, it's actually gonna be a unanimous vote. There's no discussion. It's not a consent motion. Move on. All will go after Tom.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
Right, but.
Not schooling, asking.
No, but, but I think also the point is that if a member had a question in regard to one of those superfluous items, then he had the right to question that and got pulled out of the consent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, fair enough.
Alright.
It was in there at the same time, because obviously that, that's what it's done now.
Well, I just changed my.
Next item on the agenda, are there four of us superintendent?
So we want to keep you up to date on all of the planning that's taking place for the reopening school. I think our last meeting was on the nineteenth, so that's a recap. On August twenty-fifth, we held three parent guardian Zoom meetings, the question and answering. Uh, they were sort of back-to-back and a half an hour in between, one at each school. And I want to thank the principals for doing a great job and Dr. Henson as well, and Dr. Curly was on call. And, um, they were recorded and then they were shared out for anyone who wasn't able to attend. Lots of good questions. Uh, that was on the twenty-fifth. Then on, uh, August thirty-first, was when we brought, when, was when teachers returned. And we also held a convocation, a virtual convocation, and I wanted to thank George Schmidt and Nicole Bartlett, Jessica Rulo, she sang the National Anthem. David Whedon also spoke, Consuela Carroll did a great presentation on her position. Um, there, Siggly shared some thoughts with the association and then Skyler Reckle with the closer with, uh, a really moving speech. And I really appreciate it that everyone, um, participated. So I did tell Jesse Little Don't Bear when I saw her yesterday that I did also share her video response to one of the hundred women of the century as, uh, her meaningful words. So that happened and then there were individual staff meetings that were also virtual in each of the schools. And then there was time for what we call the must-dos, which is an online, um, somewhat tedious annual activity that reports that all staff is required to do. That was a lot of talk.
Good to have you. We have to do that as well, correct? Something you have to say.
Yes, I don't think we do all of them, but you do your own sharing task. We will send those to the school committee must-dos. Then yes, yesterday, right? Let's see, second yesterday, we held, uh, Zoom Q and A sessions for our eleventh and twelfth graders. And then we had a second session for ninth and tenth graders. And then tomorrow afternoon is one for our seventh and eighth graders. Those are also being recorded. They'll be, um, I know we put the parent and the parent and guardian question and answer sessions are posted to our FAQ, uh, Google site as will, will these will be as well. So that any student that wasn't able to go, uh, the way we did them, which I think was great, is that Dr. Hanson sort of monitors the chat and everybody puts their questions into the chat. And then she reads them and we, and we respond. So, um, that's worked out pretty well. Um, on Thursday night, which is tomorrow night, uh, there will be letters going out to all of our elementary students. And the letter will include the students' homeroom assignments, the cohort that they are in, if you're in grades four through six. Uh, there will be a confirmation of the learning model in that letter. It will, our records will have indicated. And then there will be a confirmation of what the transportation plan was that the family submitted. So those are going out in sale mail or in the, in a letter, um, tomorrow evening. Is that correct? Elementary principals? Yeah. US mail.
Friday, actually, is when I get.
They'll get that, yeah, posted. Right, posted. In terms of the middle high school, they will be notified through Power School of their cohort assignment only on Friday. And that's whether you're part of the Mashpee group or the Falcons group. And what we have been able, next to Sean Lurini, created in Power School, there's a little icon. And so you'll either have the Mashpee M or you'll have a Falcon. That will be a way to signal that you, which cohort you're in. And if you have looked at all of the master calendar on the district, we have already laid out, and it's in the handbook agenda you have as well. We have already laid out every Falcon, Mashpee week in terms of who's in person and history mode. So a family can hang out on the fridge, we probably do these things. But it is in the district calendar, so people can look for that as well. And then for the middle high school, their individual student schedules will be assessed. They'll be able to access them next week. Like, what day do you think?
Uh, Wednesday afternoon.
Wednesday afternoon through Power School. So theirs is all done electronically. It does say in, um, it will reemphasize in their letters, and it was in my letter that I sent on August thirty-first to families as well, that there are no changes that are going to be taken place. There's a lot that's gone into determining the cohorts and then from the cohorts at the high school, making sure the four through six family members matched up. And then all of the layers with the busing and transportation. And then from there, placing students who chose to be one hundred percent remote learners strategically across all sections of courses, seven to twelve, and all of the in a homeroom at the elementary level. And so where you are is where you are, and we're not going to be changing homeroom assignments or course schedules. And the thing about our structure is if you've chosen to be a remote learner, you can change your mind to be in-person, you know, up to grade three or hybrid, four through twelve. However, and, and the place that you would sit in the class is pretty well, um, reserved. But the transportation is a little bit of a different issue. And so there's a, like a two-week timeframe for switching to remote to hybrid or in-person. More so, I think, with the hybrid. And the other piece of that is our remote learners will be following a schedule that, that has been created. This is a middle high school issue. When you then say, I want to be a hybrid, you may have a little tweaking you have to happen with your schedule based on on the numbers, because there's ten in-person spots in every, any, every one of those classes. So anyway, just so everybody understands that that's not, there's no ad drop period this, this year, which is something kids are used to. Uh, we did have, you know, some of the good questions with, and I encourage everybody to listen to some of the student ones, but one of the changes is there is not going to be the Dunkin' Donuts morning visit that then comes in with the kids. And as Principal Val Strachey said, they'll you have to save quite a bit of money over a short amount of time without having that. So it is the water piece that they are allowed their water bottles, but, um, and then, um, so then we, we have our seventh and eighth grade tomorrow night for the Zoom. And then next week, we have some step-up events for seventh grade, some step-up events for third grade. And I'll just let the, um, principals, and I did want each of the principals to share out about their first two days, three days now with staff in terms of, um, just sort of general experiences. But also sharing out, Mary Kate to share out her great free step-up plans, and then Principal Val Strachey to share out his. And you might have to come from behind them.
We want to have this. Doris to come up to you.
Why don't we have Deb go for us since she's, uh, the youngest?
Oh, Deb, we're not complaining tonight. We're moving it along. So we're not complaining tonight. We're moving it along.
Moving it along.
Hi, everyone. So we're a, a little different animal at the Cooley School because our kids are so, are so young. Um, what we've decided to do is put it out in our weekly blog that parents can bring their kids, set them up with a tour. And they can come through the school, but we want an appointment so that we don't get a rush. And they're being very good about it. Uh, my assistant principal, Brian Prima, is, um, kind of taking the lead on that. He's doing a really good job. We've already had probably eight or nine families come through. And we'll just keep scheduling until everybody has a chance to get through. Um, the teachers talked today about making videos. Um, so like a kindergarten video and a first grade video, and then we would put it all, well, I wouldn't because we don't know how. But we would put it all into, you know, a nice little Patty package. And then when they clicked on that, they could kind of see that with some, if you see music and some tech going on. So we're, um, looking to have a little bit of fun with that. And I, I think as far as our teachers go, ninety-nine percent of them are happy to be back and feel very safe. But you always have a couple that, um, are a little hesitant. And so they've been working with Nurse Dacey and trying to make them feel a little bit better about, um, what they're walking into. They are currently working on a new technology platform called Modern Teacher. Um, if I had to say that there was any stress in the building, that would be it. And I think George can attest to that. He was in the building. Um, because that learning curve is, um, bigger for some than it is for others. So what we decided to do was tomorrow, instead of sharing out, we're gonna make little tutorials for those who are nervous and have the people who are experts come on in and, um, and work with them. And, uh, just to finish up, the DBW has done an amazing job. They've just been crushing it. Working really hard. It's been hot. Uh, they've done everything so far that we've asked. And I'm, I'm really grateful for that. So it's a great year for you.
I just want to add that. So the DBW did put, at least, I know there's two storage units at each elementary school. Do you have more than that?
I have like six.
Yeah, two of them in the back. Uh, and that is where all the S S furnishings are landing. Each school does have sort of the, it's not the long-term, it's short-term storage. It's what it's called, in a location that allows teachers some access. Now, over the summer, things were marked and some things have landed in long-term storage that are not likely to come out because it's all loaded in there at this point. So anything that a teacher needs, we're gonna make sure that they have. And in the short-term storage, like in the Cooley School, it's in the back half of the gym. I mean, there, there has to be materials in there that people can use if they need them. And then in this building, there's multiple locations of computer classrooms that are short-term storage. And then many things have gone out. Good question?
Have you received your tent?
Uh, not yet. So I, I will have an update for the tent. So we ordered six tents. And as with everything during this level of experience, we can only get three now. They are due to come tomorrow or Friday. I believe that the shipping didn't change from six to three. I question that, but whatever. So, and then Gail has looked around for additional and no one wants to go to get us a tent prior to, say, November. So we're gonna give our first tent, one at each school, try. You can still take a class outside. You don't have to be under the tent. So if it's a nice day and we have encouraged children to bring beach towels, there, there are plenty of opportunities to go outside and still have spaces. So those were, you know, just sort of protect from the sun. And we'll, we'll keep working on that, but, um, those, at least luckily, are then, and then DPW is putting them up.
Uh, my question was about the gym. So what's the gym being used for? Is it also gonna be used for eating, like the other gyms or?
Right now, the back half is our KCC. We're calling it Walmart. It's all set up into rows and things. And the front half is an overflow for cafeteria. If we need more students, we, for example, today, we found out more students were coming in person. Um, they have already changed from remote. So we're not sure if we're gonna be able to fit everybody in the cafeteria. I can fit sixty-two, maybe sixty-four. But, um, we'll have to kind of wait and see. So right now, I talked to Kristen Daly yesterday. She's our PT teacher. And right now, if the gym is available on the front, she can bring her classes there. If she chooses to do that, that would be nice for them. But we're not sure yet.
So I was just gonna say reinforce, we use, we want our PT classes outside because that's where they need to be. But you're also talking about class ten. Like you would not be twenty kids in that half of the gym. So the window's open, but the ideal is unless it's, you know, bad weather out, they're outside.
Uh, I think it was Mary, bad weather in New York. Yeah, so the. Yeah. So the, the other question I had was when, when do we get, and I'm sure you must have had a date where we say, okay, enough, like we're starting school in five days. We cannot accommodate any more changes until we start. Like, when is that date?
I believe it's when Dr. Hansman's head explodes. That was really good.
Well, no, I just, you're saying there are kids who change their schedules.
I haven't gotten that update and I'm the master, master scheduleer.
You know, we are really striving to be very student-centered and family-centered. And we do have spots for, so unless they're totally new to the picture, if you were remote for two, you know, the last two weeks, and now you're like, yeah, I think I do want them, they do have a spot. So at Coombs, it's a little easier except for things like the lunchrooms and all of those. But classroom-wide, every teacher has 11 or 12 desks.
Uh, it depends if it's a corner room, 11 desks for the interior and 12 for the.
And so some of those teachers know that the three that are positioned here may be banking bacon because Johnny's at home. But if Johnny does come, he does come. But that's how, that seems a little bit similar. The transportation.
Right.
The good team. But we.
They're still in good shape.
Yes. They keep monitoring on a daily basis. And like I said, your head exposed.
We're in, we have a chart. So every time someone either moves in or takes transportation who didn't before, we add it to the Mashpee week and the Falcon week for each bus. And we have a good, we're in good shape right now for transportation. So.
Unlike other districts who chose to hybrid students alphabetically, which is really, my opinion, no challenge with that. I bet we could, we could do a workshop on this. I'm telling you, it's quite an interesting type of experience.
So the answer is, um, we don't have, there's not a time at this point.
I mean, obviously someone's going to call on the 14th, they may be told no, because particularly if they want transportation. Because those bus drivers are going to have their, we met with the bus drivers this morning. Um, and we do that annually and, and all of them does say that we're the only district that does that. But all the administrators, we all get a common message. We value our bus drivers. Uh, but we talked about, we will be giving them the, the CDs. And you will load a bus from like whoever first on, on the, on the route gets back. And you do the zigzag seating plan, but they won't have to develop seating plan. But they have the question, like, if a student shows up who's not on a list. If they don't know them, like we have some, some protocol that we're going to use for that bus company. But, you know, you, you don't get to just get on the bus. We have to make sure we have a spot.
My last question is, uh, we, we don't care a lot about pre-K. In fact, I'm, I think it's pretty impressive. We're offering pre-K this year. Um, and I applaud you guys for sticking with that. I think there's a lot of parents who are counting on it. I am continually surprised when I see things on Facebook, people don't get email messages and post on Facebook instead of just contacting the superintendent. But, um, it seems to be especially true of new parent, of like these pre-K parents who are like, I didn't get email, that kind of thing. So how are things going with our new families?
That's, that's a Power School issue. And until, um, the, the person who registers them gets all of their information, then they go into Power School and then they get an email. I've only sent out a couple. So I feel like they're thinking, I'm, I'm, I'm not getting any emails when in fact I haven't sent anything out in, in a week.
Yeah.
Um, so until they're in Power School, they will not receive any emails. And to be in Power School, we have to have all of their information, uh, the birth certificate, the proof of residency, all that good stuff. So, uh, that could be the case for some of them. Um, we've had a couple of glitches with emails, but Sean has come to our rescue.
Sean Lurini. Okay. And just to emphasize for the public who may or may not watch this meeting, we do not offer remote learning for preschoolers. That has come up. If you are, um, on an IEP and you're part of the preschool program, there are different things that may be set up if that is truly what you need. But the general peers that are in a preschool setting, that that's not an option because we're not required to provide preschool. So the, the ability to be a remote learner pays in a key way. Just for everyone. So how about caution? Do you want to?
Now let's hear about caution.
You get to take mine, yes? Hi, everyone. It's good to see you. I am very excited that we will be able to welcome our third graders for a tour. I know it's been very difficult because they missed every step up opportunity that normally have. So we are going to have three evenings, September 8th, 9th, and 10th, between four and six. And, um, a Ford is going to go out that I've been somewhat struggling with, but I will get that out to the families so they can register. We do not want them to come and overwhelm our, the school or be standing. We want to certainly honor social distancing respect that. So the superintendent and assistant superintendent are going to join Assistant Principal Seeding Papoca and myself on those tours. And, um, should be a really nice night. I, I am really looking forward to meeting them. I've talked to a lot of the parents. I know they're nervous about coming to the big school, but it's okay. This is a great place to be. And our third grade team is very, very excited to meet the students. It's also nice because we've increased our third grade to eight classrooms versus six, keep the numbers down. And each of those classrooms has about 13 students at this point. Um, so we're ready. We're ready. And it was great to welcome all of the teachers back on Monday. Um, we have been very busy. The teachers have been very busy. And, uh, Mrs. Goulart talked about, um, Modern Teacher has been going strong in all of the classrooms. And at the end of yesterday, the end of today, we've had a sharing out and the progress that teachers have made. And it is so amazing and so wonderful. And to capitalize on that silver lining of COVID with the collaboration and teamwork of teachers, where they're really complementing one another, those teachers who are more comfortable with the technology helping other people. I think everybody in our building right now has a bit emoji that's really. It's really adorable. But, um, our landing pages, which is where the students will go to their, meet their classroom teacher if they're remote. But it's, it's like a business card electronically, but, um, they're coming along really, really well. I'm really quite impressed on these landing pages that families will go to. And many of the teachers who took the class, especially this summer, have moved on to these playlists, which are, um, like the lesson plans that students will be engaged in. So we're going to talk a little bit as a staff tomorrow about those, show some of those examples. But I really feel very good about where we are right now. We're moving along. Um, you can't say, you know, I, I know there are some bumps here and there. Nothing's perfect this year, but I think what was important to me, um, right from the very first day with our building meeting, we cannot focus on every problem. We have to focus on solutions. We have to deal with what we have in front of us. And I have to say, um, I called staff this summer up until last week. I'm sorry, you're going to be in another classroom. You might be in another school. You might be at a different grade level. Every single staff member I spoke to, without exaggeration, airgate, whatever I can do to help. That is the spirit of our staff. And I cannot thank those people enough. And that's from our unit A and our units and members. They were there for our kids, our school. So I appreciate that.
I just want to piggyback a little bit. Mary Kate talked about the teachers creating a landing page. So unlike in the spring, it was kind of like all over the place. We have a district landing page. And every learner, whether you're in class or you're remote, will be able to click on the picture of the school. It takes you to the school landing page. And then on that page, there's a little artwork, the principal, the sister principal. But you'll see, okay, grade six, and you can click on the sixth. And then every teacher, whether it's their bit emoji or the actual picture or just their name comes up. And you click there and everything you need to know for learning and, and how everything that's going to happen is right there. And that's district-wide. So it's all one place. It'll also be linked to the website, but that Google site is, I think should be a nice streamlined experience for families compared to the spring. And this is not going to get into that.
And independently, without a lot of direction on this, the teachers felt that, especially in fifth and sixth grade, where our teachers are teamed and are departmentalized, the teams really wanted to get their landing pages in sync with one another. So it was clear to the families on that team what it would look like. And so I think it's been a really, it's been a continuation of that collaboration and collegiality that we really saw rise to the top in the spring. So I'm happy about that.
Just to add another two cents. Yeah, I know when, when teachers are introduced, so the Modern Teacher platform, it's a little overwhelming at this point during this week because now, you know, the first day was fine, but now it's, today was day two, tomorrow's day three. And then everybody's off for the four days of Labor Day. But next week is much more open in terms of them really then being able to apply that learning and sort of feel a little bit like they can catch their breath. So when I, though I walked around several ones of, I know that feeling and having had it. But it's going to settle in once they have the, the time that they are getting for the next time, period time. How do you go? Any questions?
I have a question. I guess I watched the parent question and answers from Power School, most of them. I haven't had the opportunity to watch the, the kid queue in yet, but. The only thing that I can't wrap my head around is the teacher interaction with the remote learners. And I get the landing pages and the asynchronous learning, and I think that's, you know, I can see how that's going, how that's going to play out. But how often, it's going to be what, the fourth, four through 12 students, how often are they going to be interacting? I, you know what? I'm going to even move away from the middle school because I get the middle high school because they have the opportunity to check in at every single class rotation. But so how are four through six going to interact with their students? I'm sorry.
It really is the blended learning model that we had talked about. And a part of what we have to do is take attendance for both our remote learners as well as our in-person learners. So students will be given a teacher's schedule, which will be posted electronically on that landing, landing page. So they know right in the morning when they have to sign on. Now, the teacher, in the way I look at this, it's, teachers have written very detailed lesson plans over the years, whether it's, you know, pencil and paper or whether it's done electronically. Really what they're doing is making their lesson plans come alive for students to see. And the students will be given a mini lesson, all the students, whether you're remote or in the classroom, they can watch that same mini lesson. Teachers can share the clear touch with home learners by turning that into a whiteboard. And that's something that Suzie Brooks, who is amazing, shout out to Suzie Brooks, and all that she has done to help people and is always there every day through this whole time too, um, can help with. So the students at home can see that clear touch as a whiteboard on their Chromebook, which is pretty great. But they would get that mini lesson. Kids in class would go off and do their assignments. Kids at home can go off and do that assignment. They would be instructed during that early morning time, this is when you need to come back in. This is when I want to see the work you've done. They could leave that chat up. So if the kids at home have a question, they could then put it in the chat and the teacher could look. And I think what's important to remember is the teacher looking at the class lists. And Canice four and three, for example, they have approximately 19 students in a class. Every teacher also has three to four remote learners. So we're talking about 15 students who will be hybrid. So we're looking at seven students in front of them for a Mashpee week, seven, eight students in front of them. So when those seven or eight students are working, it is something that a teacher could then go to that chat, monitor that chat if there's a question. We've also talked a lot about partnering up in-person students with remote learners. They can work on Google Sites together in presentation and research projects together, whether they're in school, ones in school and ones at home. You can do that and you can collaborate the same way on a Google Doc. So I think what's going to be really important is to provide those remote learners with specific times to check in. When they go to special, those remote learners go to special. And that special subject teacher will do the same thing. She'll take attendance or he will take attendance. This is what the assignment is. Um, you know, our teachers have great creative minds and together be really able to come up with some great strategies and how they want to collaborate and have those kids from home to foreign person working together. And I think that's the big idea is really to give those students a schedule in the day that they need to be a part of that mini lesson in math and ELA especially, and science and social studies really. But, um, I think math and ELA don't have that. We also are planning, I know I'm not sure when this is happening yet, but we have a packet of remote materials for those learners. So they will need to have a time to come to pick up their math journals. They need to pick up their reading and writing companions from the Wonders program. Our third graders have to come and pick up their handwriting books. So they will have the same materials at home that the students in person will have in front of them. So that needs to be done as well.
And so I, I appreciate, I think it's awesome. Again, I don't get a lot of people walking up to me off the street asking these questions, but this is one thing that I got a lot of questions about. And, um, I couldn't answer it. And so I think it's neat that, that there's, like, going to be a lot of classroom management kept on the teacher level. Is there an expectation from you and superintendent of, but, but the kiddos need to be engaged minimum number of times per day? So I know we look at the schedule. It just says morning meeting, academic, recess, lunch, academic.
Right, right. And it's not, that's just the general master schedule, but then the teachers will put that in a much more detailed area. Like how much time they're going to be spending in reading and math. It's not broken out that way. The master schedule just is an idea of when those instructional blocks are, and then the individual teacher's schedule of that instruction.
It could be several or one or more check-in times or times when they're expected to be engaged with the teacher or an individual student during that block.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Two questions. One, just to clarify, if a student is remote and has a question, they have, the only way they can communicate with the teacher is through typing in a chat?
No, no, not at all. Every student has their own email and they can communicate through an email. They would be able to communicate. Sometimes some of the teachers have class dojo that they would also be able to communicate.
During, during the class, right? If, if I had a question, the only way I can communicate that question to the teacher is through typing in the chat? Is that correct?
I think you could use multiple means still during the class, but if it is a mini lesson where the teacher is engaged through a Zoom, so to speak, then the chat is a great function. But you can also be heard.
You can.
You can talk. Yeah.
There's audio.
There is.
Okay. I thought you, I thought you.
The teacher can open that. No, you can do that.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
She could have opened the Zoom and, and maybe she's done the lesson and there might have been a discussion, but maybe now the students are writing, are allowed 30 minutes to write out, to write something. But she would be available if she was in the class if you have a question. And there's different ways they could do it, whether they left the Zoom sort of open for the, you know.
Right.
Oh, right. I was only in version. What did you say?
I'm sorry if I, if I wasn't clear with that. I, I think most often though, if a Zoom is going to be left open, you're probably not going to leave the audio on as loud. It would probably be more of, of leaving the chat. But during a regular discussion, because kids in the class aren't going to get some call out younger.
I guess my other question, since we're going to be so reliant in the very junior license Zoom, I guess that's the product we're giving. Is there a troll that is done for those kids that are new to this? And when does that happen?
Well, I think, and this was very strategic. Well, I think, and this was very strategic with the schedule that the superintendent put out for our Mashpee Week and Falcon Week. That first week, that is just the three days that it is going to be, and I don't remember if it's a Mashpee Falcon, which Falcon, Mashpee Falcon. Falcon, Mashpee Falcon. That will at least allow every one of our students to come in that first week. And really the focus, so what we talked about in this school is that the focus really needs to be in explicitly teaching our learners, whether they're hybrid or whether they're remote, how to access these landing pages and how to access the actual lessons. So there will be an opportunity to teach that explicitly. But we don't want to wait for that. I think that needs to be really addressed quickly.
And we will be creating, Suzie Brooks will be creating tutorials, just to have those things for the teachers. There will be some available that will be geared towards the student. So at any time, and it'll probably be, I don't know which site for sure, or one of those house, but families and students can access that. They need any help with any of them. Because the remote-only learners are not going to have benefit of having that in-person tutorial during those first three days. But we will create online tools for them.
Which is great because that, that leads to the last question in order to support the work providing to the parents who have to support the kids that are working in order with, you know, particularly from a technology standpoint, to make sure that, you know, they're able to connect and with their problems. Looking later through some of the documents here, that says, send an email to our help desk, basically. Anyone who's worked knows what that means, sending stuff to the desk.
But it's important to say that because Suzie Brooks monitors that. And you get a response within seconds.
But, but that's presuming that someone else has the ability to send an email or a text to her. So I think it's great if there's tutorials that will help educate people on how to use it because unfortunately, unfortunately, parents are going to be heavily involved, particularly in the young kids.
One of the things that does address that, and I, I think this was really a great suggestion, and it came through the Modern Teacher Training we had this summer. And today I shared, one of our teachers, Colleen Stroshine, has took the class this summer, but also has a really creative and really attractive bit emoji slide that is her landing page. And one of the things that she put on there is a little help button. I need help. And that was one of the suggestions. It's like, the teachers have all experienced remote learning now and they know that they answered the same question five hundred times, just because it is confusing. So they are designing and keeping those questions in mind. So parents and students could go right to that help on their landing page to get those tutorials or to get the answers. And that was part of the suggestion from Modern Teacher. And it makes so much sense because the questions are not so uncommon. It's the same question over and over. So if people know that right from the classroom teacher's landing page, that's my teacher, that's who I'm going to, they can get the answer to those questions. It's great to have another help desk, but students and most families want to go to the teacher. I imagine Mr. Corwin knows that.
Yes.
Yeah, so it really is, her, her landing page was really well put together, well as many others.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, Washington now is, I mean, they're going to be doing something they haven't done before, which is taking the Chromebooks home. Right? And so I understand we purchase some extras, right? Or we kind of swear with, you know, what might happen in terms of loss replacement.
Yeah, we will have replacements if something happens. We also purchase sort of like the bubble wrap kind of packaging that, you know, the go-here transporter.
Also, they'll be getting, on those first three days, everyone will be getting their, assigned their Chromebook and their device, although I think some kids may have them still, but.
Yeah, they may not be the first three days because of, they're on a boat. So if they're not all in.
They stay on a boat.
Yeah, like, you know, they're, you watch where it is.
Oh, oh, they're not here yet.
Right. We have a good number of them and we're, we're well positioned to start the school year, even if everything doesn't come in. But I don't want to say in a public meeting that every kid will get their device on that first day in case, because we just don't know what's shaping how that's going to play out. But we have a really good replacement and repair plan in place that worked really well this, this spring and that will continue to be in place for the folks. Mr. Brownie, if he is still here, has done, he has worked so hard with Suzie and Colleen. Yeah, they're got that thing. But yes, we do have that one.
Yeah, and, and I imagine, I have a little expertise in the rising sixth grade parent. I think just like our seniors who are kind of walking into the building for their final year, yeah, something they were very excited about, things have changed. I think we're going to have some, I, my sixth grader is pretty psyched to be coming back. But I think things are going to look a lot different for them and this is a big year for them. So how are you, you know, sort of thinking about how's that going to be handled? I'm not saying it's going to be hard for all the kids, but I just think they're, they're kind of the big kids on campus here at Washington this year. So what's that going to look like for them?
Absolutely. And it's, it is all of the kids, there is going to be a change. I think of our third graders, the biggest thing is when they come here is they have a locker and they will not be able to bring the lockers. I think it's going to be hard for our sixth graders not to be around all of their friends. They will be distanced and their classes will be smaller. But I do know that we have such a solid team of sixth grade teachers that are going to welcome those students and they will be, will be replacing some of those traditions that we've had before in different ways. And one of those things, I think, Washington School and Veterans Day, it's always been a really big celebration for us. But we also have a teacher that is going to be deployed this year. So he is going to be our veteran this year that we will be following and celebrating. So we're going to replace some of those, those traditions that we've had with other things that can be done. And again, I think it's a focus on solutions and not the problems. I, I'd say, only way I can put it.
Yeah, yeah, it's that loss of, what's the word we're talking about? With this tradition, but it's, it's just that you have to replace those with new things.
We do, we do. And I do think like even at, and I think sixth graders in their leadership role, and I always talk about that with sixth graders, that you're the leaders in this school. Every little eye is looking up at you. And at recess, we will have different ages at recess, not just one grade level. It gives them an opportunity to be leaders. Where when they were all together as one grade level, they're playing, having a good time, but this gives them a different opportunity. And I think that's a good thing. I, I think it's a really opportunity we have not had before.
That's great. Thank you.
So for recess, so the remote learners, that's going to be on campus, right?
We will be able to use some equipment in between the whole recess area. We're dividing into area A and area B. And students that come out in each group will go to different areas with fifteen minute block in between. So if there is equipment that is frequently used, we will be able to have our recess monitors wipe those down, spray them. So even if we use the tennis rackets, we should be able to clean those in that fifteen minute block in between those two recesses in those areas. I'm very optimistic.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Just want to give you a quick update on Nashville Middle High School, but I feel like I do remiss. I did start by recognizing Superintendent DeBoer, Assistant Superintendent Hansman, Dr. Curley, the two principals behind the amount of effort, the detail, attention to detail, and in this planning process is why we're here today. And able to knock on the start school on September sixteenth. And as a principal of a building, had the support of superintendent, superintendent, special ed director, it means the world. And it's really helped us to get through some of the difficulties in Milwaukee times, lots of experience. So I want to recognize them publicly this evening. For our Nashville Middle High School, as you can imagine, you know, different type of start to the year. When we're doing a virtual communication, even a virtual opening day staff meeting. And you can imagine that, you know, in our role as leaders, but also in the role of teachers and support personnel, that there are certainly some apprehensions coming back in, some anxieties people might be experiencing. And once they got into the building on Monday morning and after our meeting, it was just a truly amazing thing to see the positive attitudes and mindsets they have going into the school year. And one of the big things we talked about in the opening day meeting was not to label this school year. Everybody's already done that for us and said how hard it's going to be, how different it's going to be, how difficult it's going to be. And our message to our team, and we're going to continue to work again on this each and every day, is we're going to make the most of this opportunity. We don't have to do this work, we get to do this work. And it starts with them going to look at the problems, like Principal O'Brien said. We're going to look at solutions and really see what we can get out of this year. Because this school year, while unique and very challenging circumstances and circumstances in many ways, it's a challenge and opportunity for us to learn and grow. But maybe something great comes out of this. Maybe some of this blended learning, this instruction, a block schedule, those things could have lasting and profoundly positive impacts. So the mindset of our faculty and staff is they really want to do the very best job they can. With that comes some individual stress we put on ourselves to do the best we can for students and families. But their attitudes are very, very positive, they're can-do. We've solved more problems, I think, in the last probably four weeks than we've ever solved in our collective lives. And it's done through the positive mindset that we can do this. And that starts with the support of the committee, the superintendent, right on down to us and to our faculty and staff. So I was very, very excited about that. We've been able to get to classrooms for the Modern Teacher Training. Our teachers, almost every one of them already have their landing pages done. Many of them just learned about them yesterday. So they're really taking it on. And I know this chair, Lauren Schmidt, came in, was able to talk to some of our faculty and staff. And while there's always concerns, there's a whole lot of optimism as well. And I think it's important to keep that positive mindset, not just for us as adults and professionals, but also for our students. When our students walk in, it's a positive experience, it's a positive welcome. And we're really going to help them to retrain themselves how to learn. They've been out of school for six months, so to get back in at least at a hybrid model is something we're really excited to do. Superintendent DeBoer mentioned, we have had parent forums, Q and As, we've had student Q and As. And the best part about it was getting to see the kids and be able to interact with them. And not one inappropriate question, not one inappropriate virtual background. Our kids are awesome. It was great to see them. All the questions they asked were pertinent and appropriate and I thought it was really effective and a great opportunity to get to see them. And I just wanted to kind of share a quick personal story. I get takeout from a local establishment in Mashpee Commons about two and a half weeks ago. And as I walked in, I didn't have this nice short haircut until about a week ago. It's a pretty long, you know, hair. And I get out of my Jeep and I hit the doors off, my hair's all blown, I just had it fast on and I went in. And it was like going into Nashville Middle High School. You see all the kids that were there, serving, planning, working. And when I got home, I opened the bag with all the takeout containers. And on the takeout containers were all these notes from the kids. And they were awesome. It was, it was not just, it was, we miss you, we want to be back in school, we can't wait to come back. Thank you to everybody for what you're doing to get us back in school. So I think this kind of gives you that rejuvenation of spirit that we need when you enter into what is going to be a unique and different type of school year. And so I'm very confident and excited for our staff and the candid attitude and really more, most excited to get our kids back.
We're all smiling there.
I share that with our staff, because, you know, we're here for kids and that's why we do this job and that's what makes us so rewarding each and every day. For our grade seven students, we are going to be having some orientation opportunities next week. We have a few more available staff with our assistant principals, other U of D members, as well as some volunteers that will be offering tours. Tours will be signed up in fire one home this evening to all grade seven families. They're going to be calling us directly at the school, the schedule there, tour times. And we're going to be able to get that done in a two night, two night period, Wednesday and Thursday next week, the ninth and tenth from four P M. to six thirty P M. at the Nashville Middle High School. We'll have several tours going on at once, from different locations. We'll have multiple exits and entries to the building to avoid any congestion. And we'll be able to get those kids in and we'll be able to get them as acclimated as we can to the building, which is exciting because these little guys, they need to come in, it's a big school, it's a new experience for them. And coming into the middle high school, this is a really big transition. So we're going to do the best we can to support them. We're also offering to any family of any grade level who has concerns, their students may be experiencing anxiety over coming back. We will make personal tours or private meetings. I already had a couple of meetings with some students and families to help them through. And those are very valuable discussions. So I'm excited to get the kids in for the orientation. And then obviously, as we get back, you know, we'll work with the extra school activities and clubs. We'll work to try to weave back in athletics as mobile and as feasible. But more important, just excited to get started, excited to have life in the buildings. It's tough when you're like one of the three people in the building decides to be D W. every day, just walk into this giant vacant space. And to have our teachers back, that brought some life, and to have our kids back, it's really going to bring the light back into our school. So I'm excited in our plan, I'm confident in our plan, and I'm just really grateful to everyone for their support. Our community is coming back to school, other communities can't say that. Our association has an MOA, other communities can't say that. And that's all through collaboration and the leadership of superintendents, superintendents. So again, you tell them always a positive guy, I'm very, very excited to get our kids back, first and foremost.
I was just curious, do you have to add additional classes?
So. An additional staff?
Yeah.
We did not have to add any additional staff to our current staffing. We were able to kind of work within our, our system to be able to do this. Really, like I would, it somehow worked out phenomenally well thus far. We're still in the final phases of balancing just individual class sections. So I think I'm now capable of reading Harvard Look-Its as opposed to the prior time in my life. I didn't, I'm too old for that. But if you look at how we were able to cohort our students, once we co-horted through the buses and all that, that was a huge process. But then I had to go back and cross-reference every single student in over two hundred and seventy-six individual course sections in the building to make sure that there was at the maximum ten on any given cohort day and week. I do want to recognize Lindsay Kett and her counseling team. Without them, we would not have been able to do this. And at every turn, when we run into a, an issue or a concern, it's, it's resolved almost immediately, more than a day. And it's really been just exciting to be part of this and to take this challenge on as an opportunity rather than a burden. And I think that's important, I always think of that. But we do not have to add any staff. I'm very proud to say we are offering our full slate of programs to all students, seventh floor, including electives.
Well, my only question was, I heard a few parents have said to me, like, how are you, how's this even work? Like, you're telling me you don't have a history teacher, us teach chemistry now or something like that? And you reassure parents that, like, our, our content teachers are doing what they do, you know, or something? I, I think based on what you just said about, you know, how you're like, even you're like, wow.
Well, it works out, I think, when you go through and try to create a new schedule to meet the needs and protocols that are in place. You have to look at all options. But luckily, we didn't have to have, you know, an English teacher teaching chemistry or vice versa. Most everybody's teaching exactly what their license to teach. And very few instances where they're teaching something a little different. But if it is different, it's very minor differences. We're not having any English teacher teach a math or vice versa. We're really trying to put people in a position to be successful. And it's going to be a stressful year for them in many ways. So we're very fortunate. We have a great staff, we have a diverse staff that's able to do a lot of things. We have a person who can help with scheduling, and Mrs. Kett, that, that just makes it all kind of come to fruition. So we do not have those types of issues.
So even all of our language offerings, that's all happening?
All of our language offerings, fine arts, performing arts, music, all those, and CTE electives, all happening. And while it may look a little different here or there, the biggest thing that was important to me as, as the principal of the school is to offer our full slate of programming. important to me as a principal of the school was to offer our full slate of programming. I didn't want to give those things away from our kids, as many of them engage in those, and it helps them to really enjoy school.
Yeah, well, when you say what's not the same, I mean, I've, my parents, not just here in the Commonwealth, but across the country that I've talked to, you know, plenty of schools cannot do that. But in fact, more often than not, they're unable to do that, so that's amazing.
Thank you. Very, very fortunate to have great people working with us and supporting us.
Okay, and I'll wind it up. I got a chance to walk through a couple of schools and visit with some of the teachers, and it's been a fascinating experience for me so far, and I'm sure it'll continue to be as I go through. But one of the things that came out from a few of the teachers, and from my experience in dealing with some of the people in town here, was how prepared we were as a district compared to the district that they're having their children go to. They were particularly impressed with the superintendent's videos, you know, what a day's going to look like, and a classroom's going to look like, and how to get into school and all of this, that sort of thing. And other districts, they still don't know what, what's going on. And it's, it's really a tribute to the work that the administration and staff have put into this, and I, the one who runs the rest of the school committee, very well done, and as would their expectation.
Well, thank you. I just want to say though, you know, every day, we do expect something from everybody. So we have like the low right now, and then everything's going to get sent home Thursday at 5:00, and then, so there, and then when we bring our kid, ooh, that's going to be another roller coaster up there, so. But we just handle it one day at a time, we do the best we can, and I, you know, in acknowledgement of this team that has put in sort of cohesive planning and discussion since March 13th, so I'm very grateful. People have, have said nice things to me as well, but it really doesn't seem overbearing because I think that this team has helped the community so much, and we definitely do together, I'm not going to overdo this.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Bonnie, can we have a total enrollment number yet for the year?
No, because there's still a lot, there's a few that are leaving, and they have employee withdrawn, and just had to take the work. So there's a weird power school process that is lagging, but we should, you know, we have our next meeting on the 23rd, so we have a concrete number after we get 5:16. I just want to add one more thing before we go to the next topic, I know we're late, but I just wanted to make sure, we, we have had meetings, so it's, it's a go for the rec department to provide school day childcare at the Boys and Girls Club, that's a partnership we've developed, we had a meeting yesterday, they had another one today. So we're tweaking the hours to make sure it will work for the working family, but like Mary Bradbury and her team, they will be handling the personnel. Boys and Girls Club is basically providing the space, there will be a fee that is paid, and then we are going to provide the furnishing, whatever they need in that space. So if it is your remote week, and you're pretty much space four to six, you would be able to, if your, your child could go there for their remote learning, they'll have a desk, there'll be people there to support their learning through the front block, and then the next week, it will be the other cohort, and it should rotate throughout the whole year. I think she said she could accommodate about 50 students, so that's all getting organized as quickly, and the goal is to get it out to families who are still scrambling to figure out what they're going to do. But I think, just kudos to Boys and Girls Club and their board directors, school assistant town manager, and everything has been a guess, and Mary Bradbury's put in a lot of work, and we're not doing as much, I feel, as the rest, but whatever we can do to make the work, I'm just happy that that's a nice space during the day.
Thank you.
Next is the, our news business.
I said I would have general comments, but in terms of time, I'm going to defer them, but I just want to let Patty know I'm going to send an email to her about the H V assessment.
Yes, so that's correct.
I'm really just going to tell you what I'm going to email you about for the committee to know, so it's, I'm going to, I don't want to put us too far behind. And I know we've been talking about P P E, but I was curious if you had any love on P P E, including the antenna type.
So I don't know, Stacy, do you want to pop in on the P P E? I believe we've landed on the alcohol wipes, but this is, this is what makes Stacy ten first.
Hello, yes, it does, but it hasn't yet, so I actually just did a few emails while I was listening. So, right now, correct, we are on alcohol wipe, face wipes through W B Mason. I just re emailed to follow up the status because I was due to do that today, and we are going back and forth between hydrogen peroxide wipes and alcohol wipes, so all the vendors just, again, got those requests to give me an update tonight. Sorry, that's my no copy. Pete, sorry. So we are, we are working on it, I believe five of the peroxide wipes got delivered today. It's literally, again, not for lack of trying.
Can I ask you a question, Stacy? On my work side, you know, we've been stocking up on ant sanitizer and wipes. One of our regional offices got a large shipment for the year, you know, for a good chunk of time, which I imagine we're trying to do too, is purchase and borrow. It was brought to our attention that those were considered to be flammable materials that needed to be stored in a particular location that's, that's secure and safe, so do we have that covered here as well?
So yes, that's been discussed with D P W. Once we get the shipments, we'll make sure that they're stored correctly, well, they'll be registered with our test management for the EPA, so all those things are being addressed. We have the S D S sheets, we'll have parent sign-offs, so people will know what we're using. We actually are putting both items on for the parent permission form, so if somebody chooses to stop that, we'll be able to address that. There'll be containers per classroom that are, for that classroom, but nothing will be overstocked, so that we make sure we manage the buyer. To.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the slogan.
So you have, actually, what I hinted at today, or today, there was only one page that had some minor change to it. I don't know if you had any questions, but I don't want to do this. The intent is that this will, we labeled it sort of with the A in terms of age, so we knew it would be the end of. The handbooks that you had already seen, the changes, and the charts are in here from previous. So those, those updates are going to be made in the actual handbooks, and then this is going to be added to it, but this will be sent separately as well to all families to make sure that you may need to read the whole handbook, because everything else still applies in most patients in terms of multiple high schools, of course, it's nothing. So this, though, is really sort of the guiding COVID-specific adjustments for this year or differences. And now, like I said, the only change that was, the one that was in the packet is on page 9A, we added the yellow box at the bottom, which is just some tips for kids who are anxious and don't want to look at themselves on Zoom screen, so there's just a little bit of tips for the kids there. And then on the very next page, the part on attendance, we did add the sentence there about, "In order to be considered present in the class, the remote learner must be visible during all classroom online meetings, and must also participate in daily activities slash complete classroom assigned by the teacher." So you really have to register a school day, and some of this has to do with remote learners being able to participate in sports, you have to know that they were basically attending school that day. So that's in there. We will be creating a Google form for parents in terms of the sign-off sheet, and at the very last page were some of the items that they'll be indicating, you know, yes or no to.
I'd love to improve this full handbook with the whole agenda.
Motion made, is there a second motion?
Second.
Motion made by Jeff, questioned by Nicole, discussion on motion.
I have a couple of questions. So I'm just going to, please, what, what is, you know, gather from page 14, I guess it's 3A. Page, page 14. 3A, 3, 3A, I missed, yeah. Okay. In regard to local emergency contacts, maybe this is, I, the name of the words, we're requesting four local emergency contacts, is that correct? Is it always been that, four?
It is, that's like four, one, four. I'm going to say it was in D U guidance, but I don't, I don't know, Stacy.
So that is, we've always done three, but D U has been encouraging schools to do four. What we found a lot of times is it's two parents or parent guardian type setup, and then this gives us two additional people that people know that they can identify close contacts or cohort weeks, however they're working it. So four is advised just to make sure that we can be timely with having people, students dismissed at a reasonable and as soon as possible.
And if they don't have four or don't provide four?
We're asking for what people can, we'll work with, just like we do every time, if we don't get any or only get two in the past years, and just try to brainstorm to see what other, other things that we can do. So I have to be honest with you, most people always give us the three more than not, so hopefully four won't be as much of a challenge.
Thank you. On page 4A, this is probably the worst question again, in regard to physicals, number two, the scheduling of all visits. They're supposed to provide a copy of the most recent physical to the school nurse. Is there, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that most people are providing their annual physical? Is that what they provide, or do they have to provide something more recent?
So it's the most recent one they've had on file. Again, families are awesome with this. You can email it as an attachment. We do reminder notices. D U actually did a waiver for physicals, so we'll take the most current. We realized that you can't have a physical by insurance unless it's been a year, so it's just a reminder to make sure we have the most current information on file, so that if we need to make a individualized healthcare plan, especially if there's any issues related to putting a better, a different plan in place for COVID-related reasons, we just want to make sure we have the most updated information on file.
All right, and then right after that, on the same page, is just a small reference in regard to community conversations and physicals, there's six and all, for all students. What are we going to do if a student or a parent wants to opt out of that?
The same thing we always do, we will follow the D U and D P H guidelines on those requirements. We need something in writing, but that's not really a big change to practice, that's been in place for along, ever, forever since I've been school nursing.
I'm now on page 17, I guess I have a question regarding quarantine. This could be problematic in regard to if a student traveled outside of Massachusetts, so we'll suddenly run to that other state that's right next to us, Rhode Island. This is indicating that they would need to be quarantined for 14 days?
Correct, those are the current guidelines on the mass.gov website. It clearly states what states and quarantine guidelines and all those things, but you have to remember that we actually have the opportunity for students, if they do travel, they can attend remotely, unless obviously they're pre-K. So it really should, although, you know, obviously they won't be in school if they are in person, but they will have an option to attend, so, but we do follow those, that's a state, mass.gov regulation, and all the states are listed on the website, and we will address that accordingly.
All right, so we are set up to be able to handle converting those from in-person to hybrid or remote during that two-week period? Yes, okay. On page 18, just, we're never going to leave here. So, and the policy of when a close contact may return to school, all, all close contacts should be tested with self-quarantine before 14 days. 7A, I'm, this is 7A, page 18 of the packet. So, must self-quarantine before 14 days, this policy won't, any close contact may return to school, right? So regardless of the test result, they must self-quarantine for 14 days, so this is regardless of their own test result, they still.
This says that they're positive definition of, are you reading the top definition of close contact?
Right, so must self-quarantine after the last exposure to the person who tested positive.
He's in the second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at a bigger screen. So, again, this is all going to be based on various situations, and again, it's going to be directed by the Board of Health, Contact Tracers, which is the V N A for Mashpee. So, right, this, these are the D U guidelines currently at this point. So yes, but it'll be situational-based. So if they don't, if you look at the guidelines, if they get tested, there's a little bit different, so this is a generalized statement, and it will be individualized based on the situation.
Okay, but if I'm, if I'm a parent reading this, I don't know that. I'm just reading what you're writing.
Right, but you, you will know this once you are contacted by a contact tracer and they go through, and you've been defined as a close contact.
Okay, seems like we're oversimplifying.
I understand where you're going with this, and this is why we reference the D P H guidance, because there are so many scenarios, there's really no way to put it one, we can't just put a situation in because it will not apply at all. It's going to be very individualized, which is why we're doing all of the seating, charting, recording of attendance, recording who's where, when, why, and again, two days prior. So it's challenging.
I appreciate that, but I guess it would make sense to me to represent situational things that we indicate that it's fine situation, but that's not what we're saying, we're saying it's basically black and white. My last question, I think, is for the superintendent. Yeah, that's the last one. So on page 41, back to the, can we just, I was trying to do the math, and I couldn't figure it out, where we say, you're going to have some learning day for all students, it's six hours and 30 minutes. But you know, when you're going to, it's five hours, okay, to six, and five hours and 30 minutes for grades seven to 12. I was trying to figure it out, specifically, I was looking at the seven to 12. Where's that one hour difference that, because I can come up with 35, 40, 50 minutes, but I can't come up with an hour difference? What am I missing?
Well, the guideline, I mean, these hours come from D U, so these are guidelines, so the fact that you might be looking at, they really give you a schedule, they, we are dictated to plan for learning for remote learner at the highest level that's five hours and 30 minutes, but they're, obviously, they don't have the passing time, they don't have the lunch, so I don't know, I'd say I count for the superintendent, for following the, but these, this amount is not based on my debt, this is from D U.
Okay. All right, we'll take it off. Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you for tonight. Thank you for this.
Jeff or Paul? Okay. Uh, so here I know for the questions, how do we vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. All that other order.
Right. Okay, back to the agenda. Next on the agenda is the new business school committee self evaluation.
So you just have in your.
Mr. Chair. Sure. Okay. I have a lot of discussion on the next meeting in a second. I took my second discussion. Here in our discussion, Kathy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next is the anti racism resolution. I would like to make a motion to refer that to the policy committee. I would like to make a motion to refer that to the policy committee.
I have a second question.
Yep, negative.
I have a motion to refer this to the policy committee for studying evaluation.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, a motion made in second and any discussion gone? Anyone else? Okay, here in the discussion, I call the vote, Kathy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 So with this, we've already done. I didn't, I didn't expect, and there's no others that are talking, I get some sense of public comment?
There is none.
There is none. Okay, is there any additional business come before the committee this evening? There are none. I just go to the meeting.